Good evening. And welcome to our work session for June 4th. Time is really rolling. I will ask the city manager to start us off.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would like to ask that we go into executive session to discuss a privileged item. I'd like to ask Mary Feeny to just provide the motion language.
Yeah, it would be a motion to go into executive session under the attorney-client privilege to discuss workers' compensation claim for a period of, I'm not sure how many minutes.
No more than fifteen.
No more than fifteen minutes.
So moved.
And who will be provo-- who will be, who are you asking to say?
Present would be the attorney for the city regarding the workers' compensation claims, Jackie Russell.
Shannon Langston.
And Shane, I'm sorry.
Shannon Langston.
Shannon Langston. And members of the governing body. And the city manager.
Are you okay with that, Chad? Okay. So move all those in favor. Raise your hand. Okay, we're in executive session. City Manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would like to ask Mr. Fiander, Planning Director, to come forward and provide some information on an annexation exemption for water at the address of 3400 block of Southwest Indian Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Fiander.
Thank you. You should receive a handout at your chair tonight. We're going to go through a little bit of some background on the case and then get into the case and then hopefully you can feel free to ask questions about this. Item is on for next week, so we wanted to prep you for it. And it's a small case, but it does get into big policy questions, so we want to make sure you all have that in front of you. Just before we get into the details of the case necessarily, want to have a background, policy background and the code background, so everybody kind of understands what it is we're dealing with. In 2007, this body adopted a code that required annexation for city water and city sewer as well, outside the city limits within the three-mile ETJ or the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city. In that area, we have plating authority or subdivision authority, and we approve anything, any subdivisions outside of our city limits. The annexation requirement was put in place for both platted lots as well as non-platted lots. And when I say that, for those of you not aware, outside the city, if you have three acres or more and you're subdividing into a three-acre lot or more and you have 200 feet of frontage, you don't have to plat. So there is no plating approval by this body. And that's kind of the, so before 2007, there wasn't any requirement to be approved for further subdivisions of that type outside the city. So moving forward into when the ordinance got adopted in 2007, it set forth some implied policy, and that is something that, in essence, allowed this body to view any exemptions to that policy. And it implied that by saying you have to be in the city to get water service, in this case, that's what the request is for, you are not necessarily approving further subdivisions outside the city limits that have to tie on to city services or that we're not prepared to serve as well. And so it would not be in the best economic interest or conformed to our comprehensive plan. So that's sort of the implied policy there. The stated policy in a comprehensive plan does discourage the continuation of the three-acre plus lot subdivisions, encourages more of a 20-acre plus minimum lot size for non-plated lots, so that we preserve our rural character outside the city and then also encourage compact development and cost-effective service delivery within the city and then any city expansion. So that's kind of going in the policy. And then why that's a good idea is really, why did we do that? Why is that something we want to continue carrying around? Really, it's connecting the city water. We don't, outside the city limits, we do not receive property tax, and so it's neutral in terms of property tax. So we do get water fees, but it just goes to water, the water fund. When we stretch out our water lines and whatever services we have, we do have a higher cost of service delivery, and we don't have a return on investment as much as if it's a compact, dense development. Think of it this way, if you had the same section of water line, what is it better to serve 10 homes or 100 homes on that same section? We're better off through our investment having a compact and denser development. And then also, it's competing against our neighborhoods for residential growth and property tax, and it kind of, in essence, undermines some of our general fund revenue and increases our service costs by, again, competing against our neighborhoods within the city. And then lastly, by allowing this sort of growth to occur, it does impede the city's ability to grow compactly. You bump up against a lot of the tracts that are three acres and above, then we have to leapfrog over that to serve a denser development, increasing our costs. So that in and of itself is kind of why. The result over the last 50 or so years of this sort of pre-2007 policy, if you will, was we did not keep up with the percentage of our population within the city, and that's what the code is designed to change somewhat now. We went from the last 50 years of having 84% of the county population in the city to 71%. And that equated to a loss or potential lost revenue of 23,000 people within the city, which equates about six to 10 mils of residential property tax every year. So it's pretty substantial that our policies align with the ability to grow compactly and orderly. So getting back to the specific requests here, you have the code that requires annexation, but then you also have some exemptions. And there are, for water, there's seven exemptions, two of which this body decides. Two, one's for economic development, and one is for hardship not created by the actions of the applicant. And both of those, and you have approved those exemptions in the past. Tonight, the request is for the hardship end of it. That's not created by the actions of the applicant. In the past, the approvals that have, the cases that have come before you really centered on where the lots existing prior to us changing the rules in those hardship cases, because people got caught up in investing in a property, buying a property, being ready to build on a property, and then we changed rules where they could not get annexed, and we had a water line or a sewer line running by their property. So that was really, as far as we're viewing tonight, sort of the intent of what the exemption was about. In this case, the specific, and there's a map on the back of your handout that shows the property, the subject property, a little more detail. The request in the 3400 block of Indian Hills is a simple one-lot tract. It was split off last year from a, it's a four-acre tract, split off from an 11-acre tract. There is a water line, a city water line that runs in front of the property, and this is, it's located where it drains directly into Lake Sherwood. The character of the area is really three-to-13-acre sized lots in west of Indian Hills. When you go east into Lake Sherwood, those are obviously more denser and half-acre type lots. The owner in this case has consented to annex, which is a requirement of receiving the exemption. So when we get into reviewing the request, staff looks at two things. One is how does it meet, does it meet our code, and certainly the intent of our code? And then also, is it consistent with our policy? As far as the code goes, that's, and that is your determination, if there is a hardship that you find, I would just, from our standpoint, staff looks at these as though if someone is creating a new lot, which is what this case is about, then the action was really, in part at least, the applicant's action. If there was a pre-existing lot prior to 2007, something where, before the rules changed, then they, we caused the hardship by changing the rules. So that's kind of how we look at that. We don't think it necessarily meets that test. And then as far as our policy goes, in of itself, the areas, the size of the lot somewhat is consistent with the area. However, by creating a greater density, it's not consistent with our comprehensive plan because we can't annex anything. We can't, it's not feasible to annex the lot by itself. The area around it is not, does not have consent to annex, and so we would have a hard time just annexing the area. So we, in some less than 20 acres, it doesn't meet comprehensive plan policy. It does require also to be connected to sanitary sewer, which they have agreed to do that. So that's, it won't have an environmental impact in that sense. And then how's it shape up with the previous actions the body has taken, this body has taken? We're not, there's probably been about five or six of these over the course of the last five or six years that were exempt for the hardship case based on the lot already being there, being created before the rules changed. Or it could meet a 20-acre minimum range, as was the case with the last time, a couple months ago, we brought an exemption to you in south Topeka, south of Topeka, near Montero. The landowner was able to have a 20-acre density for the two buildings, the two homes that he wanted to connect with sanitary sewer. So he was able to have, he was able to plat it in that manner and preserve the ability to have a denser development in that area in the future. So that's what goes into the staff review. The recommendations really are that Planning and Public Works does recommend disapproval of that based on the fact that the lot was created after our rules change and then also the, not being consistent with our policies. There are some other options I'd throw out just for some consideration if you want to discuss, and that includes maybe fine-tuning the ordinance itself to make sure that we do not have a hardship for any lots created after the 2007 rule change. We also could look at updating, and we plan to updating our comprehensive plan to identify areas that may not all be 20-acre areas. There may be three-acre areas, there may be 10-acre areas outside the city based on that current, their current character. And then we could also identify some of those full-service areas where we have the five, all full-service, city services, sewer, water, roads, police, fire, that we can come into or already are into and have those as our, as our, sort of our tier-one, if you will, annexation areas. So there's a couple of different options there, but our main recommendation would be that this is not consistent with what's been approved for the hardship cases in the past, and we ask you for your consideration. Any questions? We'll try to help with.
Are there any questions? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Looking at the map there, this parcel, the original pre-2012 parcel that this was now a part of was coming under the previous, there's a house on it, residence on it, but now they're selling a portion of it. Is that, is that how this is being created?
That's correct. Yes, that was the parent tract, the yellow, was outlined in yellow, and I'm not, it was sold at, the red tract was sold at auction last year.
So each of these, and I just note there, all that area west of Indian Hills place, there is a residence on, pretty much on each of those. And now, are they all receiving city water and are they in sewer?
They're not on sewer. Most should be on city water. I know this, the service area line between where the city serves and the Consolidated Rural District, they, I'm not sure if that's all city or not, but certainly right around there to the north, to the south, because the water line does go down Indian Hills Road, would definitely be on city water.
And this particular parcel, the question is, they wish to be on water line? They wish to have city water?
Yes.
That's really how this, the question came about?
Yes.
They're requesting to receive city water?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Karen?
Along those same lines, I really appreciate your taking the time to approach this from a land use planning perspective, because I think we need that, and I think we need to spend more time on that. So I do appreciate that. That said, usually we get these, and the maps show us where the city limits are, where that three-mile zone is, and where the water lines are, and which properties are on the water line. And I'm feeling a little lost without that on this map. And further, though, it way predates my time on the council. I know there are issues with Sherwood, so I realize that those boundaries may not be just a simple line as they are in other parts of town. And I think to make, for me, to make a good decision on this, I would appreciate that other map as well, because, you know, it caught me as it did the mayor. If the water line is going right down the street, I didn't know. If it's there, then it seems logical in a way to ask to be on it, and if everybody else is on it, I think we should know that, if that's possible. And then you mentioned sewer, and the same thing, they're willing to go on sewer. There's no city sewer out there, or there is city sewer out there?
Well, it would be county sewer.
It's county sewer? Okay.
It's across the street.
Okay. Just...
And, yeah.
And similarly, we have been shown in the past where other properties have done consent to annex, just so we know whether it's, there's a lot of it or none of it.
Yes.
I would, rather than ask those questions one at a time, I would really appreciate being able to have the map like we've had on some of the other ones, so we could see it.
Sure. We can do that, yes.
Thank you.
One other question. Are you through, Karen?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. So does the city and the county have to consent? Are we consent on the water and then they consent on the sewer?
I don't, well, no.
If it's county sewer, how does that work?
It's kind of a moot point in terms of, they can hook on the county sewer, but there's no rules with the county sewer for them to come in the city. It's only if it's the city sewer.
Oh, city sewer.
Yeah.
But is this city or county sewer?
This is county sewer. It serves...
Okay.
The Sherwood Improvement District that the sewer serves.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're consenting the water?
This is water only.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Did anybody else have a question? Anybody else have a question or comment or concern? Okay, so what we're consenting to is the city water, and they're on the city, or the county sewer?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
I may have more questions once I can see that other map, but I just think that'll be really helpful. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. And you might have to call him, or we can do it whenever.
I can add my list if you need.
If you could get that to everybody, then...
No, we'll get the map made and send it out.
I will agree with Karen, that's always been helpful.
Yep.
So I appreciate that. City Manager?
Deputy Mayor, thank you. That concludes workshop items.
Okay. Any other questions? If none, this concludes our workshop, work session.
Council meeting will come to order. Please rise and give your attention to Councilwoman Michelle De La Isla for the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
It is a great pleasure that I introduce Reverend Barry Feaker from the Rescue Mission. They do wonderful work, and he will lead us in prayer tonight.
Thank you very much. An honor to be with you tonight. As we go to prayer, let's remember our brothers and sisters in other communities who are facing some really serious recovery efforts of picking up from these storms, people who do what you do every day, yet with this added burden. And if you are from Topeka for very long, you know we've experienced it as well. So let's remember them as well as our city. Father, we lift up tonight around our nation those who are suffering, those who have lost home and life, family, possessions, and in some senses, the future that they knew. We ask that you would give them comfort, send the assistance that they so desperately need. Lord, we are one nation, under God, and so we come to you now as one concerned people for others. We pray for those government leaders who have to carry on with the duties that are before them, like the duties that we have in our city, yet with these added responsibilities. And so we lift them up to you tonight for great wisdom and understanding. Lord, lift up these members of this council, our mayor, our city manager, and staff of this incredibly blessed city. With our challenges, we have opportunities. We thank you for those who have stepped forward in leadership here and who have said yes, who sacrifice much of their time and the challenges that this city faces with stretching themselves forward to say, here I am, Lord, show me what to do. So I ask tonight that in this meeting and in the days for the rest of this week and the rest of this year, that you give these men and women great understanding, great wisdom, great compassion, and great connection with each other in this community as we strive to make this the place that would honor you and be a place for all citizens to live, to enjoy, and to prosper. We give you this meeting now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There are no proclamations this evening, and City Manager, I believe there are no presentations, so we will proceed with the roll call.
Ms. Hiller?
Here.
Mr. Kapos?
Here.
Ms. Ortiz?
Here.
Ms. Everhart?
Here.
Ms. De La Isla?
Here.
Mr. Man Speaker?
Here.
Ms. Schwartz?
Ms. Harman?
And Mayor Button?
Mayor Wollgaster, excuse me.
Both here. I want to acknowledge or announce that Councilwoman Schwartz made plans to be away, actually for, be this week and next week prior to the election. So this was a longstanding commitment that she had made, and that is why her, she is absent for two weeks. We will proceed with the consent agenda.
A, our minutes of the regular meeting of May 21, 2013, and there is a list of applications for you. We have one dance hall application and two open after midnight.
Okay, that is the consent agenda. What is your pleasure? Councilwoman Ortiz has moved approval.
Second.
Second. Mrs. Everhart, seconds.
No, De La Isla.
I'm sorry. Mrs. De La Isla, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have seven yes.
Sitting having voted yes, the consent agenda is approved as read. Go to unfinished business, A, demolition permit requests. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Your Honor, Council, we received an email today from Kay Scarborough, who is the Topeka District Superintendent for Kansas East United Methodist Conference, and they have requested that this item be removed. They are withdrawing their request, so I am asking that we remove this item if there's no objection on the part of anybody on council.
Are there any objections to removing this from the agenda? We do have a public comment, if you wish to speak. Sarah Bremer-Parks.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to basically say thank you and to acknowledge that the process works and to also acknowledge that Reverend Scarborough, who is the Kansas East Conference Superintendent, has really made an effort to be collaborative with the neighborhoods and with all those who are interested. So this process is moving forward, and we'll try to keep you posted on how things go. So just wanted to express gratitude. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Parks. Then we will move on with the agenda to new business, the final plat.
Six A is a final plat for HME subdivision located between Northwest Button Road and Northwest Indianola Road, the center of the tract being approximately 1,200 feet north of Northwest 25th Street, all outside the city limits within the city's municipal service area and three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction, all within and incorporated Shawnee County, Kansas.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to invite Mr. Fiander, Planning Director, to present on this item and answer any questions.
Thank you. The subject plat before you is before you because they need a waiver from our wastewater policy. It's normally, you normally would not see this plat, but because they are asking to not be connected to sanitary sewer, and it's in an area that is required for sanitary sewer by our wastewater management plan, that is why it's before you. The background is, it's about 20-acre parcel in between Indianola Road and Northwest Button Road. It has an existing business on the 20 acres that wants to expand. In order to receive building permits, they were required to plat by the county, and so they came before the city. They're basically reconfiguring some lot lines. It's all under the same ownership and creating some different lots for the buildings. It does, we do believe it does meet, it is consistent with our comprehensive plan for the area. We do think that it would, we would support a waiver for wastewater management plan. There are existing septic systems in the area for all the businesses that are out there. The expansion itself is fairly, although the building is fairly significant, the intensity that they'll need for those sanitary services is not. They have consented to hook onto the sanitary sewer when we do extend the line out there, and they have consented to annex as well. So we stand before you asking for a motion to approve.
Thank you. And the actual, what we're approving is really, they're asking permission to make some improvements on their property. It's not really a change in any sense from zoning or anything like that or with it.
Right. The zoning's in place for this industrial, light industrial use. The outline of their holdings out there is not changing. The interior lot lines are changing, so they can place buildings appropriately on the lots and then also have a lot free to sell or develop by themselves in the future.
Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd make a motion to adopt the final plat.
Harmon has moved adoption of the plat. Is there second? Ms. Hiller, seconds. Discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have eight yes.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the final plat is approved. Next item is for applications.
There is a list of cereal malt beverage renewal applications for consideration.
Any questions, or your pleasure?
You want to refer to that?
Ms. Ortiz moves approval. Ms. Everhart, seconds. Discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the applications are approved. Item C is establishment of date for interviews for the council District Eight position. Is that, Ms. Ortiz, a deputy mayor?
Thank you. When this position became vacant, Elaine notified me and said that she was going to be out of town for the next two Tuesdays, and we were kind of looking at our budget hearings that were, you know, that we wanted to start in June, but having said that, that would push our new council member back to miss like two or three meetings. So what we've, what I'd like to do is defer this until Tuesday, the 18th. That way Elaine will be back and we would all be able to question our applicants. And it's just kind of trying to be fair to, fair to her so that we have, all have an opportunity to ask them questions. And then I'd also like to, at that particular time, go ahead and vote after we've heard from all the applicants so that we can get them sworn in and then get, get back on track with our, our budget coming up. So that's the reason why I wanted to defer it from tonight until, until then is so that she'll have an opportunity to come back and we'll all be able to ask them questions and be able to interview them. And with that said, I'd like to go ahead and defer that until June the 18th.
Okay, is that, is that as a resolution or what?
It would, it would just be a motion to establish the date of the interview for June 18th.
So Deputy Mayor moves the establishment of June 18th for the choice for the candidate for District Eight. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Hiller, seconds. Discussion. All those in favor signify by voting yes. Opposed, no.
We have six yes. Seven yes.
Seven having voted yes. That date is established as June 18th for that, that decision. That concludes the new business. We'll go to first readings.
A, is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson amending City of Topeka Municipal Code Sections 1310-010, 1310-410 through 1310-460 concerning private fire hydrants and specifically repealing said original section as well as creating new Section 1310-415, first reading. B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson amending the district map referred to made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at the southeast intersection of Southeast Scorpio and Southeast Virgo Avenues from M1 to Family Dwelling District to R1 Single Family Dwelling District, first reading. C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson amending the district map referred to made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at 2038 Southwest Gage Boulevard from C4 Commercial District and R1 Single Family Dwelling District with a special use permit for a vehicle surface parking lot and a children's park all to C2 Commercial District, first reading.
Thank you. Miscellaneous items, go to presentations by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. On June 12th, Wednesday, June 12th, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the bank building at 8th and Jackson, we will be holding a Kansas Avenue Project Open House so people can learn more about the project timeline, speak with the engineers, have an opportunity to share their input on the design details that have been developed up to this point. We're still early in the process and it's a good time for people to become engaged in that. On Thursday, this Thursday, at 9:00 a.m. at the Fire Department Academy, there will be a Fire Ops 101, which will give city leaders a hands-on experience with firefighting activities. It's a lot of fun if you haven't had a chance to go through it before, and so I encourage people to be aware of that and to participate. Those who've been invited, this program was developed by the IAFF and as part of the Kansas State Council of Firefighters Conference, the governing body and members of the media are invited. It is growing season, so from a code enforcement perspective, we've cited more than 1,200 weed violations for the month of May. This number is more than half of all the weed cases cited in all of 2012, and we still have five more months left in the growing season. So just as a reminder, grass that's more than one foot or taller, or one foot or taller is considered a nuisance and, and will be cited. You have a week to cut the grass. Our crews have mowed 237 lots in May that were not voluntarily compliant. Now, we just talked about cutting, now we're going to talk about trimming. Budget season is also here, so that was a great attempt at humor.
It was good.
Thank you. We will, we, as, as the deputy mayor had mentioned in her comments, we will be starting the budget season in July. There was a conversation about starting in, a little bit earlier in June, but based on travel schedules and the new council member joining us, the first meeting will be at the beginning of July. We will put out a complete schedule within the next couple of days. We're just confirming some dates, so everybody can be very familiar with when this will end and when it will begin and the steps in between. We're really going to focus on educating people, engaging citizens, getting input, making sure that we put you in a position to make the most informed decision you can and position the city for a very strong financial future going forward. Thank you very much.
It's amazing what rain does. The grass is growing rapidly. Well, as for my part, I would like to make, to make an introduction. There is a new assistant to the mayor, Vicki Buning. If Vicki would stand, so you, you know who she is, working with me in the mayor's office. Vicki worked for the state for a number of years, and we're glad to have her services working in, working in the mayor's office. And we start with the person who gave the invocation, so Councilwoman De La Isla.
No comment.
Councilman Manspeaker. Councilman Harmon?
Just very quickly, there was a article in the, I think it was the June issue of the Kansas Bar Association Journal, a very scholarly article about eminent domain written by Mary Feeney, and just wanted to acknowledge her expertise in that field and her willingness to provide that article for the benefit of the practicing bar of the state of Kansas. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller?
Well, concurrent with the grass growing and it being gorgeous in Kansas, it really is a great time of year. It's my favorite time of year in Topeka. Hopefully people got to the Mulvane Art Fair last weekend. There was a picnic at Garfield Park. Helping Hands had an indoor event. The Sunflower Music Festival starts this weekend and runs for nine days at Washburn University. It's free. It's always fun, a wonderful opportunity to, to go personally or to take children and expose them to chamber music in an orchestra or ensemble way. I could list them on and on, everything from multi-neighborhood garage sales to, to community picnics and events are happening, so I encourage everyone to look around and get out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Campos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to extend invitation to all the public and also the council members. We are currently putting up the murals right now in Oakland. You got Wednesday and Thursday, it's from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Friday is, excuse me, has a 1:00 p.m. veiling. So that is something that's going on in my district. Also, we have the Fiesta Food Sales, so any of the staff in the audience who has a lunch break, go on down over the Seward Bridge and get some food. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. I want to welcome Vicki, and she does know she's to bring cookies once in a while, right? If she doesn't, the mayor will get with you and what kind we like, Vicki, but congratulate, welcome. I wanted to acknowledge that Saturday I went to a ribbon cutting for the Discovery Center. It's their second anniversary, and it's very exciting to have an outdoor, wow, it was, it's very exciting. It's a pond and also a, I don't want to call it a creek, but anyway, it's, it's, it's really neat. The kids could go and build their boats and put them down on this stream thing, whatever it's called, I can't think of it right now, but anyway, and then they could watch it float down or the ducks and stuff. But you know, it was kind of special, and I'm glad Larry didn't get to go to that. He was busy and asked me to go, and, and I appreciate that because when I first got on the council, the very first person I met with was Joanne, and she took me to dinner and she said, "This is what I want to do," and she had this great idea, and, and she wanted to know if I was on board with it. Of course, you know, I love kids, and I said, "Yeah, that'd be awesome." And so it's really neat to see that her dream has really come true through the Discovery Center, and I took my little one-year-old grandson, let him crawl around, and it's amazing that the grandparents love this place, that the kids can go in and learn. And so it's our new water feature, and they had cake, and it, it's really awesome. If, if you haven't been, you should go. They had a barn with bikes and a bike trail. They put on their little helmets and they're on the balance bikes, and they're riding everywhere, and they had a huge track that I wasn't able to get on because it was some other lady had it, but it, it's really awesome, and, and I think that's just great for our kids and great for Topeka, and she's got a lot more coming. So I just want to give her kudos for all that she's done, and she did relay to me that she's been sick over the years, it's been a hard two years, but it's amazing out there, and it's something that we should really, really be proud of. I want to also encourage you to go to the Fire Ops 101. I won't be attending because I already have my helmet, and I did attend, and I made it up to the bucket. I beat Mr. Akala. He got stuck actually in the bucket. And so it's, it's awesome to gear up and go in those smoke houses, and I, I was supposed to bring a man out the window, but the guys kind of, they helped me out, and I brought a young guy out the window, but it's, it's awesome to be, to see what they actually do and, and to go through the smokehouse, and, and we had to cut somebody out of a car, and I don't think that person would have made it, but we, we really, it, it's really awesome. It gives you just a different perspective of what our fire department does, and I said this year I'm going to get with the police department and, and do their little, little ride as well, but, but it's just something that you can appreciate, and I do have a helmet that sits in my living room that I'm very proud of. So I encourage you guys to go, to go and, and to be a part of that because education is the best. But anyway, I also wanted to thank our code compliance. I've turned in a lot of properties, city manager, and they're doing an excellent job, and you're right, our city crews and also the jail crews, we don't give them enough credit. Those guys are, are doing a lot, so a lot more than they probably should, but it, it is very, very helpful, so I just wanted to give them kudos as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. We have two persons signed up for public comment. Excuse me, I apologize. You get to go first. All right, thank you. I'm sorry I failed to do my job there. Two persons on for public comment. First is Andy Frye. I do not see Andy here, all right? The second person is Lazon Grayz. Lazon?
Members of the city council, my name is Lazon Grayz, citizen of Topeka. I'm sharing with you the Metro Voice news. There's an article in there about what I'm speaking about on the front page at the bottom, and it follows on to the second page, and I may need a few more minutes after my four minutes just to try to fully get your support and explain what this event is about. A friend of mine that I grew up with, he has four sons, and both of them have a condition to where they need a bone marrow donors. And he didn't ask me, or none of the family asked me, but of course, when you have a friend like that and their sons are afflicted with such, it may seem like you want to see what you can do about it. So a friend of mine, my other friend, Nick Baumgartner, who's the owner of the Kansas Coyotes football team, I asked him if he would dedicate one of his games to help these boys out and try to raise awareness for this disease as well as see if we can get the citizens of Topeka to get swabbed, to get on the national registry, and where, and maybe there's a match right here for all four of his sons. It's a very rare disease that they have, and he only has four sons and they all have it collectively. There's about 10,000 or so across the nation that are in need of bone marrow donors. And Nick said, "Of course." The Coyotes has always been a very socially conscious company, and Jim Green, the head coach, who I also went to school with as a young type growing up, it just seemed like all the stars had a line for me to ask them, and the first thing that they said was yes. And so this Saturday after their season finale, June 8th, game starts at 7:05, we want to invite the whole city of Topeka to come out and to get swabbed, to get on the registry, to see if they can save a life. You can come as early as 5:30, and as a kicker, Nick called me today and he's going to make admission to the game totally free for everyone in the city of Topeka and to encourage them to come and get swabbed and get on the registry so that we can make the best of this event. I know that there are very caring people in the city of Topeka. You just never know who in this city has the blood that can save someone's life. I would like to thank, of course, the Kansas City, the Kansas Coyotes owner, Nick, his staff, the players, and the cheerleaders. The Metro Voice for running the ad. Mayor Wolgass and the city council for your support. And the citizens of Topeka and their families in advance for coming out and supporting this cause and our capital city football team. If you would like more information about this, about blood cancer, you can go to deletebloodcancer.org. And if you wanted more information on how to contact, you can read more about it on the Kansas Coyotes website at kansascoyotes.com. On the website, there's a video of the Mary Brothers. It's a very compelling video, and then it can go on to hear some of the testimonials about those who have given blood for the, for the donor. I hear that there will be a proclamation from the mayor, which I'd like to thank you in advance, and deputy mayor for not being able to be there but hooking me up and making sure that Councilman Chad Manspeaker would be there to read that proclamation. So I'm very, I'm very honored that the city is helping in this, in this one-time event. And finally, if anyone would like to volunteer, they could call Nick Baumgartner at the Kansas Coyotes, the, the number's on the website there, and come on down, and I would like, you know, the Coyotes is a city team, and as many people, if you don't want to go to the game, come early, get swabbed, get on the registry, and leave. But I would like the city of Topeka to do whatever that they can to find as many people who can come and support these young boys.
Well, thank you very much for doing this, for taking this on. It's, certainly acknowledge your efforts on behalf of this family and for putting this together. And I was, we received a request for the proclamation. We're more than happy to fulfill it. Unfortunately, I had a previous engagement for Saturday evening, and the deputy mayor has a previous engagement, and so we're pleased that Councilman Manspeaker will be there to present it and certainly wish you good, best wishes and that you have some full participation.
I believe that there's someone in Topeka who has cure for these boys or someone that's on the registry, and thank you, Councilman Manspeaker, for taking that on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other items for the council? We are adjourned.